In honor of the prayer, please.
Our heavenly Father, we come to this city and we pray for everything. Heavenly Father, we thank you for everything. Our Father, we ask our blessings upon each and every one of the son of our voice. Heavenly Father, we pray and ask this meeting conducted decent and in order. Father, we ask that you guide our thought process and let our minds be informed. Heavenly Father, we know that if you take control of this meeting, everything will be all right. Our Father bless the people of Jasper, bless this city council, and once again bless all of it again. Our Father, all these blessings in thy holy name is our prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we'll go to item C, open public hearing, property tax rate. City staff. Property tax rate for the hearing. Anyone want to speak? Property tax rate, that's what we're talking about now. Property tax rate. Yes, ma'am. Say your name when you get up and let us know who you are if you're speaking about police, ma'am. You have three minutes. Will it be three minutes today because we do have a lot of public comments?
Yes, I would like to.
We'd like to give everybody some time.
Hi, my name is Marsha Anderson. I live at four forty-seven North Main Street. I appreciate the opportunity to come by and participate in this process. With respect to the property tax rate, I'm a rookie. I have been to one of these meetings regarding the property tax rate. So I have a lot of questions about the process. Is this a one-year? Has a rate actually been proposed? Is it a one-year rate? Is it the ongoing rate that we'll have forever? This is, what is the overall process? Will there be a referendum that we'll be able to vote on as far as the community is concerned? What's the timeline for implementing this change? What is the need for this tax increase, tax rate change? What are the expected benefits that we'll have as a result of these rates? What's the impact on small businesses and what's the impact on large businesses? If you can direct me to where I can give these answers, I'd like to know if it does. But I'm not sure that I'm the only one in the room that would have these questions. And that's what my comments are tonight.
No, this is a public hearing, so you can speak on the budget, on the property tax rate right now.
Well, those are my, that's what I'm speaking to.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have.
Are you Ms. Marsha Anderson?
I am.
Okay. I just noticed that you have several things on there.
Yes, sir.
You won't be allowed to address them.
I will come back each time. That's all right with you?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
And I have questions. I don't have answers. And I would like answers from y'all. You're our elected leadership. And I hope that you can share that information with us.
Now, directly to our city staff for her answer.
So you have a lot of questions.
I do, and I'd be happy to come to a private meeting and discuss those with you.
And anybody want to do that, but you know, as far as the referendum to the voters were below the rate that has to go to that. But I can give you all that detailed information if you want to.
I'd be happy to come see you. I'm wondering where this information would be published.
Well, we have it on the Truth in Taxation website.
Truth in Taxation?
Yes.
Okay. And is that the side where everybody goes to give this type of information? Truth in Taxation, okay. So if I went, I could pronounce this information that's answered my question?
Not all of your questions. Because like the timelines that you're asking about.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, now this is for a one-year rate.
Right.
Okay, so this will be the rate for twenty twenty-three.
Yes, ma'am.
But as far as the timelines and the process and how we got to this feeling?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll be glad to explain.
Well, if I come and take notes, can I read that out at the next meeting? Because I think it's important that we understand what the need is and what the benefits are for the community and what the impact will be, not only to the residents, but to the businesses going on.
Well, if you do that, I think council should be able to make sure that that gets put on the website for that information.
Whatever.
Whatever you'd like to do, if you'd like to do that.
Whatever's, whatever's convenient. I just have a lot of questions.
Sure.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. You will be allowed to return once we open the council meeting for public comments. Yes, ma'am. Are there any other comments for the property tax portion of the hearing? Ms. Evelyn O'Neill.
I have a question that I understand these taxes are to raise our taxes in the city is to pay for a raise for our city employees. I'd like to know how many city employees live in the city of Jasper. I think that would be, I mean, I'm not getting a raise. I'm not getting a raise to pay their, for them a raise. But I live in the city. We have some good employees. And I agree, but I know that they get paid well and they have good benefits. But I'm not getting a raise. And I just, I think we should know how many employees that work for the city, live in the city, that's going to have their taxes raised to pay their, their, their raise.
Ms. Evelyn O'Neill. Are there any other comments on the property tax rate?
My point of finger is being.
Yes, ma'am.
Not against anybody. My name's Angela Lee. I do live here in Jasper, Texas. I am a renter. I'm a homeowner. I've had a few things arise throughout the city since I've moved here. Since we're only talking about tax rate, I want to just address that at this time. I question who determines tax rate? Is it the county only here or do the city? Or does the city also go in and look at property and determine the value also?
The county, Jasper County of Rights of the District, which charges the value. That's where the tax rate goes, your council.
Right. So as far as value of property, that's all public record, correct? And anything that there be any get from is public record?
I can answer that.
Okay. So the county. But you're collecting from the county a city tax, correct? Okay. So we have one neighborhood, they're calling it, and he calls it, that is a ten-property home, individual homes, on two and a half acre plot that's conjoined together. And the value is only two hundred ninety thousand dollars. I do question that tax rate to the city on that home. They're rental. This is a business. They're not individually owned. Can we look into that and see what's missing to the city that should be going to the city? Sure. So do you, as a city, go in and look at every property and the value of it?
No.
And see that possibly you are being collected correctly or someone may be over-collecting or... I know it's about, I know it's a lot of budgets.
We're not an appraisal, specifically hired with appraisal duty.
So the appraisal just sends over the tax dollars to you guys?
It did it for the county, the school, district, and the city.
Okay. So on that, with agents, entities within the city, we're not just a city hall. We are the governing body of our city. You're our government. How does that work when people within our city are not doing their due diligence as a homeowner, property owner, tenant, business worker, owner? How, how does that get resolved to where everybody's on the same page? Everyone's treated equally. If you have a property that should not have utilities connected because it's so outdated and it's a health hazard to the person living in the property, utilities need to be cut off. We have paid employees that know that is a part of the due diligence in state law. We are broken here. We have to fix that brokenness. It is on a huge spectrum. And this town and city would be great. It will be great. Once everyone comes together, and I do think that we have people that are trying to fix the broken pieces that have been there.
Three minutes, ma'am. I could give another minute.
Oh, you don't have time, huh?
Go ahead. You've got another minute. Go ahead. You have one more minute.
So you know, there are, as far as the tax rate, I mean, I think all entities, there's, there's, because things that get done are based off of the payment of tax dollars that are collected. So I do, I would explain, I now announce it. It's going to be Keneer Property, Keneer Neighborhood is what the city classifies that as he has. I don't see it being a neighborhood. But it's, it's on Moss and Bette Lou. That's just one within our city. I have a feeling there's a lot more.
Thank you, ma'am.
May I add a little bit to her city staff response to Ms. Lee's comments or questions? So I'm going to take a step back further than the appraisal district. And this is one of the things that just hits my goat. The state comptroller sitting in Austin, Texas, tells every county, "We need this many tens or hundreds of millions of dollars from your county."
Right.
Then the appraisal district takes it and disperses it across the individual taxing entities. Okay, the tax rate is part of the budget process. We look at a budget and determine, and the taxes, the city taxes, is just one of a couple sources of revenue that the city earns. So if we need a hundred million dollars from the city taxes, we look at the total value of the properties. And that tells us if our current tax rate is fine, needs to be left alone, do we need to adjust it a bit? That's, that's kind of an elementary way of...
That's how the, I understand that's how the city collects on property value. So you have a portion that's divvied up amongst the total that goes to the city?
Yes.
And how they divvy it out and goes...
But that's how the tax rate is created too.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else have any comments while we're in the public hearing for the tax rate? Speaking about the tax rate. Okay. Yes, sir.
How y'all doing today, council members? Citizens and members of Jasper. I live on the High Trill Road. My name is Marcus Adams. And coming on what Ms. Lee stated about how these city taxes is being collected. We have seventeen homes on the High Trill Road that people occupy that actually live in the houses. And we have a total of fifteen more houses that nobody else lives in. So these houses is being taxed right along with everybody else's property. And we know that the comptroller has a budget. We know that the city has a budget. And these taxes is being collected. Look at the members and the people, the citizens that live up on the High Trill Road. All these people are elderly people. And so their social security and their money is, is being collected. And the interest is being raised up. And we have hesitation all over the roads that we can't even get the city to come up with a cut. So you mean the tip of the, their property tax is going to be raised too? And they put the High Trill Road within the city limits. Matter of fact, back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is that it for the comments for the tax, property tax rate? Council members? If council members have any more comments? Going on? Right. What do we have? This was a tax rate, but we have to read a proposal here. What's being proposed for council to approve it?
Well, actually, the, actually, the property tax rate will not be voted on by council until the twenty-third.
Twenty-third? Okay, so this is just the hearing phase? So if that's it, we will move on. And we're on, on time now, about five forty-five. We'll close the public hearing on the tax rate. It is five forty-five. We will open the public hearing on the twenty twenty-four budget. It's five forty-five. Open it to the public. Anyone have any comments? Lanier. No, I'm sorry. Lanier. Chris Lanier. No, I'm sorry about that.
Safe to say I remember, resemble that. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. I just want to speak, given the recent accusations the cities and others have taken as of late, I felt compelled to come up here and give a personal testimony. That I feel is maybe a little more solution-minded, I like to believe. My name's Chris Lanier. I've been here in Jasper. My family has been here since the eighteen fifties. And my patronage to this city is because of being a prophet of Jasper. I moved back here years ago because of the love for the city and the optimism of what the city can evolve to. Not the one portrayed in the media, but the one behind the scenes. The one of hard-working, well-intended citizens and leaders. Like a new sports season, optimism helps us look forward to that season, the Bulldogs. I like to believe the same hope as with this city leadership. To not bear about the past, to not dwell on last season, and certainly not buy into those that are rooting for, or should I say yelling against us. But most of the analogies of how businesses like sports certainly work is at that foundation. You study together, you strategize together, and you support each other on the field regardless of the outcome. You learn from your past miscues and invest as a team to make your ongoing outcome better. The city has to operate in the same fashion. Even the best nonprofit organizations out there require funding for their causes and the ability to help. However, we cannot strive just to break even and serve our customers at the same time. Without constant investment in infrastructure, without continued staff development, and without proactive marketing, and from a business perspective, we'll become that repairman that in an emergency no one can count on, nobody wants to deal with, and we're required upfront payment to take care of your problem. Bottom line, in my opinion, it is not just okay to make and reinvest, reinvest rather, your profit. As the sole provider and caretakers of Jasper's livelihood, it is financially responsible to do so. Those of us in the private business sector know this all too well from financial prices in two thousand eight and the recent COVID pandemic. Had it not been for that proverbial rainy day fund, more companies, employees, and customers would have suffered.
Excuse me, Mr. We're not interrupting, but I give you an amen, just like a...
Those that maintain cash flow for in, for seeing emergencies were able to survive. I can attest to that with my company. Had we not continued to expend marketing, my company, unless, we would have fallen behind other companies doing the same. Finally, while I'm not speaking on behalf of JEDCO, I do speak as to why cities need economic development corporations and my personal, why JEDCO. As a businessperson who's worked in small Fortune five hundred companies, I was attracted to this arm of the city because of the quality and background of the seventeen members of that board. Their diversity and the various businesses they operate here in Jasper. Board members that take the necessary role of marketing Jasper so that we can evolve and compete as a community. All volunteers and ambassadors with vision and love for Jasper, all without the noise and attraction that outsiders generate, and all with a balanced budget of one half of one penny of sales tax. Let's not let others build fences within our community. Let's instead all be bridge builders to progress and the future and security of our citizens and their future here. I respect all of you as elected officials, also as volunteers, and thank you for taking Jasper forward.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to speak on the, while we're in public hearing for the budget process?
I would like to say something, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Our original proposed budget for twenty-four twenty-five included, if I remember the numbers right, it included five percent expenditure cuts across every department. It also included a two and a half percent pay raise for certain employees. Then the next meeting or hearing that we had, it was increased, the, the pay raise was increased to three percent across the whole board, the whole landscape. So I have, I could live with the original. It was good, and I saw it working. But with even that half percent pay raise for everyone, I'm wondering what the net effect might be between the, the five percent cuts and now the three percent increase in pay for everyone. Now, I'm not saying I'm advocating one way or the other because of the bread has already been pushed in everyone's mouth. I'm not taking the bread out of the mouth. But I do have a concern with that.
Thank you very much. Okay, any more comments on the budget hearing? About ten minutes left. No comments? Okay, our number objections from council. We'll close the budget hearing and it's early unless anybody needs to take a break or go to the bathroom or something because our city council meeting doesn't start until six o'clock. If you would like to take a break, it is now. We can re-convene, we can continue? Yes. We'll close those out. Regular call city council meeting, public notice has been posted. Well, for city of Jasper, Monday, May ninth, Jasper City Hall, four sixty-five South Main Street. Please understand that city council cannot discuss any present issues, nor can it take any action on any issues at this time, except that a statement of fact, including policy, may be made in response to an issue. Jerry Jones' opinion, J C dash zero one six nine. That's the end for public comments. But first, we will, any departmental reports or any departmental thoughts? Yes, sir.
We welcome a bigger than that. He's been working with the energy for about seven, eight weeks now. He's got to do a scheduled power outage citywide to replace a hundred thirty-eight thousand volt switch coming into substation to trade for energy. Almost way to replace it is to shut off all the power coming to town. And it took about all that time to get energy, to be able to shut down power and they have to go through a process. And so it's going to be on September twenty-eighth, Saturday night, midnight to roughly six A M. We did some of these in the past. We've probably done eight or ten of these in the past in the past twenty-five or thirty years. But it's only a safe way to work on it. So we're going to be putting on the Facebook and webpage and getting on the radio, hopefully, and letting everybody know and remind you about that. That'd be roughly midnight to go off. Hopefully, it won't play the full six hours, but that's roughly what it's going to be, so I want to tell everybody that.
Well, we may have some outage timeouts this week.
Very possible.
Okay. All right. Any other departmental reports? Okay. Next item, ask Hunger Free Community Coalition. Ms. Lisa Coats? Southeast Texas Regional Planting. Oh, I'm sorry. Southeast Texas Food Bank.
Good evening, esteemed council members. My name is Lisa Coats, and I am the Hunger Free Community Coordinator at Southeast Texas Food Bank. And I'm here to introduce tonight the Southeast Texas Hunger Free Community Coalition, which is a newly forming initiative in the city of Jasper aimed at tackling hunger and food insecurity in our community. In the state of Texas, one in every four children lives in poverty, and about fifteen percent of the elderly in Southeast Texas live in poverty. The Southeast Texas Food Bank now serves Jefferson, Orange, Hardin, Jasper, Newton, Polk, Sabine, and Tyler counties. The goals of this Hunger Free Community Coalition will be to significantly reduce hunger and food insecurity in Southeast Texas, to engage local community leaders, organizations, and residents in the fight against hunger, to mobilize resources and support, get support and gain support from private, public, and faith sectors, and to develop and implement sustainable solutions for long-term food security. The benefits of this coalition will be to improve health by ensuring access to nutritious food, to provide economic stability by reducing hunger, leading to increased productivity within the community, and to build a stronger community because collaboration strengthens bonds and fosters a sense of unity and purpose. The impact of this coalition will be to provide immediate relief to those in need through food drives, pantries, and meal programs, to foster long-term change by implementing programs that address the root causes of hunger through training and education, and to create success stories of individuals who have benefited from effective programs. So thank you for allowing me to present this information. And if you need more information, please contact the Southeast Texas Food Bank at the J H Rowe Resource Center located at seven fifty East Gibson Street in Jasper, Texas. And you can see us online as well at southeasttexasfoodbank.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public comments? Who's going to Ms. Rita Thomas?
Good afternoon.
Three minutes, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon. My name is Rita Thomas. Born and raised here in Jasper, and I love Jasper. Have you guys loved Jasper? They really have loved Jasper. I'm just stopping by here to take this thing of message. I live in Houston, but I'm in Jasper fifty-sixth time, Jasper fifty-time in Houston. But the questions that I heard people asking, those are the questions that people's, we elected, y'all. We are, y'all are elected officer, right? We hold y'all accountable. Y'all ought to be held accountable on some of the things. I, I wasn't here last week, but I seen the video, all that clowning going on. We can't get nothing done with clowning. Nothing. We make a bad name for Jasper. Jasper already got enough ghosts on, on the wall. We don't need no more ghosts in the wall. We need to learn how to work together for the common good of our kids, our, our communities, and people that we elected. Y'all have to, we have to hold y'all heat feet to the fire. You know? You don't want shaking your head down. I guess you don't want to hear anything.
I hear you.
But we have to work together. And all this foolishness, you know, it's just, we grown peoples. We act like more like charity. And I like you, I bought you last week. You got some good ideas. Maybe, you know, when you put the budget together, maybe you want to put a community together. Put a community together. Let people in the community buy into, input what's going on. So when you come to, come to the meeting, you won't have to have all that arguing about this end, this end. Get people involved. You got people, people that are, that wants to be involved. Understand what's going on. You know, we come to the meeting, we don't want to come to this meeting and all that fuss. We want y'all to bring us some, the information back to community. We are the people that Jasper serves. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that right, Mike? Uh, Mr. Adams, did you have anything else you wanted to say? Yes, sir. Is it Marcus or?
Mark Coats.
Mark Coats.
I've been in this community all my life, born and raised in Jasper. Some of you know me, some of you don't know me. For the ones who do know me, you know me. Mr. Porter Dexter, Mr. Radcliffe, Mr. Mike Lot, a couple more faces that I'm familiar with. with. The reason why I'm here tonight is, is, is because of the High Trail Road. I had an animal that must get killed, get hit, coming out of her driveway because of the high vegetation. Now, I know the city, the city has a boom wax that they used to come up on the road, and they used to paint off, but the only thing that the High Trail Road has that belongs to the city is water. The license do already ain't, and it been do already. We don't got city sewage. My grandmother's toilet is been stopped up, we got big trenches that's running soup, raw sewage, and other people yawn. And we had to call out Mister Jack Martin for him to come out there to, to use a pump to pump it out, and I've been digging, 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 digging at this point. And you, and, and we talk about property tax, and we in the city. These are the things going on, and all these abandoned houses that's up there, they're being occupied by people that are homeless. People that are on drugs, and they're going in these houses, they're taking out all the wires. These are the things that transpired. I know the majority of you don't live in these communities that I live in. I've been living in the, uh, the north end of Jasper all my life, all my life, all my life, and I've been gone. And when I came back, this is what I come back to. Yes, downtown look good, uptown look good, but we used to have gone to North Quarters, East Jasper, South Quarters, areas that when people come and tie to the city, they don't see. But we see it because we live here. This is a major, major problem, it's a major issue. When I left, we had a movie, a movie theater. I come back, we don't have one. When I left, we had a skate rink. I come back, we don't have one. What do you have for these kids to do around here? Nothing but to keep your local police department occupied. They're gonna stay occupied because the thing about this, there's nothing for them to do. As long as there's nothing for them to do, they're gonna, they're gonna find it, except doing something they don't need to do. T V C J is waiting for them. A lot of y'all don't know about prison. I'm the first one to tell you about it, been up fifteen and a half years, in and out of it, washing my clothes in the toilet. And that's what these kids is getting rid of their face if you don't have something for them to do. This is what's going on. All you hear is Jasper, Texas, Jasper, Texas, Jasper, Texas. We hear about all the bad, but what is the good? Only thing good you hear about Jasper, Texas, Sam Rayburn, the jewel of the forest. And I know it's more than that. You are city officials that are elected by the people. Our constitution say we the people. We the people. These people elect these officials in the office. This is all we got? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
Uh, we have next Mister Bob Ewing. Ewing, you have three minutes?
I appreciate you letting me, uh, speak here. I wanna talk about the, uh, the, the electric rates and, uh, and reducing rates. I have a business that, uh, that does business with me, that they have offices in New York, and Oregon, and, uh, Virginia, Georgia, and, and they all had lower rates of utilities than we had here at Jasper. Now, this was ten years ago, and Mike Lott was mayor, and Mike went to bat for us, and we were able to get them here. But I, I, I wanna stand in support of, of, of this two million dollars that we're talking about distributing and lowering the rates for everybody, because I think it's something that is necessary for all the citizens of Jasper. And I remember when Anderson Land was on city council, and you came in and had a petition to get this thing, we couldn't get anything done, and he started a petition, so he's been involved in the fight from the beginning to do something about these utility rates, and I wanna thank Anderson and Mike Lott and everybody that has fought for it, and I'm in favor of anything we can do to get our rates where everybody else's are. And so, that's really all I have, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Lanier, did you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, Mayor?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, fellow citizens. I came to Jasper about thirty years ago, and I watched Jasper go through lots of struggles and lots of suffering as a community. The timber industry went off the cliff, a lot of bad things happened, then the horror of Mister Byrd, and we've become a community that was down on ourselves, compared negatively by ourselves. And we had to rethink how we thought about each other and deal with issues. I'm the food guy, someone bragging the food guy part. Harvest Church Food Pantry received five awards, a boma at the recent annual convention for being the most helpful, the most efficient, most hard-working food pantry in the eleven county. Yeah, she's nodding, eleven county, uh, and we're honored for that, or honored by that. The past ten years has been a great push by people of goodwill and good faith, trying to change our attitude, our mindset as a community, get over ourselves. So, I'm mentioning Harvest Church, but it's special to me. We feed about fifteen hundred families a month, most of them are elderly, they don't fix income, and we're proud to do it. Million, billion dollars worth of food in the last, this year that they put in the community. Opportunities exist today that did not exist five years ago. The education department up at the college, now, if you are a student, do half fries and get great discounts on your tuition, great programs available, our, our L D N programs, right now, we're, we're growing nurses in Jasper, Texas, right now, policemen, firemen, we're growing them right here in Jasper, Texas, right now, they get proud of, but we should remember that. Jetco. Go team. Three hundred jobs. Perfect? Absolutely. Sparkling diamonds? No, three hundred jobs. They didn't have to be perfect, it's jobs we do not have. It's filling up these apartment complexes with families that are moving here. That's one more group doing positive things. Chamber Commerce would tell you quickly, we've got new businesses, new restaurants, new shops coming in, in our area. That means people believe in Jasper again, wouldn't it, with the money where they believe. We have a volunteer fire department that's second to none, I am so impressed with what they're doing. The hospital board, we have ambulance service again, folks.
Bob, you got your three, Bob, you're doing pretty good, you got your three, but I'll give you another minute.
Thank you. Hospital District, we have air ambulance services. Homes are selling, homes are being built, homes are being remodeled, people are moving to Jasper, unemployment is a historic low for Jasper, Texas. We were usually eleven percent, we're at six now. That's phenomenal for us. Understand, please, that we're coming out of years of darkness, and we're working toward the light, and understand God's work is the light. Darkness is hate, discontent, discontent, and division, that is devil's program, and he left you for it. So, please reread the attitudes, and if it takes it, council, to work through this to make sure you answer this question, are we working in the best interest of Jasper? Are we to hear with petty grievances? Can I ask you to consider, if you don't know the answer to that, adjourn and go home? Thank you. God bless Jasper.
Uh, Ms. Anderson, you're up again?
Thank you.
And I see you have about four items on here, if council's okay with it, and we give her another minute.
Just, most of them are questions, so.
Okay.
Um, I did, uh, my name is Marsha Anderson, I live at four forty-seven North Main, on the other end of the street, um, and I have submitted a written request for information that was prepared and submitted by the consultant that we heard from last time about the electric rate for the city, uh, council in the city. This information may assist us in understanding the need for and the expected benefits of the rate increase, but to my knowledge, that information has not been made available. I've requested it in writing just recently, but I, I would like to get a copy of that information, and I'll, I'll come and check on that also. And I would like to recommend and request that the city council table the discussion on rate increases until adequate information has been put out to the clock to make this important decision by we, the taxpayers. If any rate increase should be considered, it should be limited to the rate that the Social Security Office is going to be approving later this year, currently is at two point five seven percent. But if you remember, last time I was here, I hoped in that twenty-five dollars a month as a result of that rate increase. So, I, I think that we need more information as to why we need the rate increases. I'm not saying we don't, I'm just saying people perish for lack of knowledge. And I think that the process, the appointment that Social Security has is agreed upon formally, it's not something that has to have a consultant come in and paid to tell us how to do it. We are smart enough to make this decision together. And in terms of future rates, I don't think we need to be considering future rates without knowing what the future looks like. I think that, uh, what if we could attract more jobs? I, I'm here to help. Paballus has done a fabulous job in terms of creating, as far as I know, tax-free jobs, they're not something that we're gonna be voting on their budget here, um, and surely, lower utility rates, or lower utility rates in the state of Texas would attract other businesses. You have to get ahead of the curve, we have to get ahead of the curve with you. We want to be your allies, we want to be your ambassadors, we don't want to be your adversaries. We all live here, we all pay taxes, we're not just passing through. We want to help, and I think that you have to be bold in making decisions and working together to move forward, and I think you should table the discussion on rate increases until you have educated the population about the proposed new.
You have one more minute. You done?
I'm done.
Okay.
On the rate increases, I got several of them. But on the rate increases, that's it.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Anderson. That's it for public comments? No more public comments? Okay. Next items for discussion and or action. Consider approval, set of minutes, five sets of minutes. First, special call meeting, city council meeting, August seventh, twenty twenty-four. Everyone's, council has gotten a chance to read those, when you get a motion to approve those minutes?
I think we can approve all of them.
Okay. The judge is gonna ask you if you wanna approve them all, and we can approve them all, okay? Regular call city council meeting, August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Special call city council meeting, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Special call city council meeting, August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, and public meeting, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. We get a motion to approve? Have a motion by Councilman Sample, you have a second? Second by Councilman DeMarcus Holmes. All in favor? Any discussion? Motion passes? Form that we have, vote for. Item number two, consider for approval, allocating two million dollars to come from SRMPA Cambridge Funds to be deducted from the energy bill, cost bill to the City of Jasper for SRMPA for eight months, at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month from December twenty-four through July twenty twenty-five to reduce the cost of our ratepayers. Just like for everyone to know that I did ask for this to be put on here, it was because we did it last year. A lot of people, people do say that this is our money, this is the people's money. We did it last year, I think we did well with the, uh, rates that we had during that time period, we only did it for six months. This time, and it was for five hundred thousand dollars a month. But this year, this, uh, this item is worth two million with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month. We gotta get a motion on that.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we retain the one million previously allocated from Light and Power to offset, uh, or in lieu of a tag of electric utility rate increase, and add a million dollar, uh, another million dollars out of the reserves for a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand a month for the months of December twenty-four through July twenty twenty-five to reduce the cost to our customers.
Okay. We have a, uh, motion to amend that by Councilman Hildebrand. You get a second? Second from Councilman, uh, Councilman Sample? You have a second? We have a second? All in favor?
Can I have discussion, please?
No discussion.
No discussion.
Yeah, sure, yes, you may.
If I could just ask a question, the million dollars that you're talking about is the one that's already been allocated in the budget?
Correct.
No, I, no, I'm just trying to be sure what it is that, that you're suggesting.
Is the million you proposed earlier, like two or three meetings ago, is that second, it is a part of the current proposed budget, correct? Yes.
I believe Mister Radcliffe wrote an opinion about this, um, earlier, right, Mister Radcliffe?
Yes, ma'am.
You'd like to speak, Mister Radcliffe, would you have your opinion, please?
Well, I have it, and I think I've given a copy to everybody.
Yeah, we have it.
And I just said, uh, the inclusion of that one million.
Can he go to the mic? I'll go to the mic. Mike, uh, I'll explain because his opinion, and I've spoken to the city manager about it, and it's in agreement with his opinion, because a motion was made by council member McCroskey, and it was approved by, the council, second and approved by the council, that money to be used for that, in lieu of that, so that's what that million dollars is going for, it can't be used for anything else. If you wanna take another million dollars, you can, you can amend that proposal to make it three million, but the money that Mister McCroskey made the motion on to fund the Light and Power Department has to go to that becomes council approved, and that was the opinion that was asked for, Mister Radcliffe.
But my understanding, and, and I have to admit, this revised agenda is ordered differently because the original agenda item was to take the one million we had already allocated and take another million and use that two million. So, I'm, what I'm suggesting is we leave that original one million alone, and, and my whole purpose behind it, and then use another million for the same purpose, as you're declaring, you see?
Oh, I understand.
And it's a, it's, it's a double win for everybody, it's still an advantage or benefit, but I said this two or three meetings ago, once you prick that balloon in that reserve, it's gonna start leaking, and it's already leaking fast.
But it belongs to the people?
I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I'm just forcing my concerns.
Sure, absolutely. And I understand what you're saying, so you're not proposing to take that million dollars and leave it where it's at?
Leave it where it's at.
But to add another million?
Leave it where it's at.
Thank you. You don't need to speak, council, we, we got, unless, unless you want to.
No.
Thank you. We've had discussion. To, uh, Councilman Hildebrand's motion? Excuse me, is this, ma'am?
I feel like I'm watching the shell game. Here's a million, there's a million, what is the total? Is it still two million, or is it three million, or?
His, it would be like if you replace the two million on the agenda item, it's only gonna be one million, because you've already, we're already contributing a million to the cause.
But that million is going to the Light and Power Fund, and that's not gonna help reduce.
But it's, it's in, it's in lieu of a utility rate increase, which is a savings.
It's a savings, because my opinion on that is, you're not gonna, excuse me, ma'am, and you can speak, it's not gonna increase their rates, but I'm pretty sure people out there will tell you, the rates today, the, the, the amount. But I'm pretty sure people out there will tell you, the rates today, the amount of their bills from last year, if they have the same bills that they did this coming year, this fiscal year from October to September, September to October, whichever it is, it's not going to make a difference by adding that money to the light and power and not increasing their rates. Absolutely, they're not going to see a rate increase, but it's not going to lower their bills. That's the only reason why I submitted that, so they could see that in their bills to be lowered.
May I be heard?
Sure, yes, you may.
I believe Mr. Hildebrand is allocating a million dollars to lower the electric rates. That's what you're suggesting. So that will lower their bills.
No, but I'm saying, is he, is he saying not to do two million, just do one million?
Correct.
Because I, because the, uh, because the agenda item says two million.
I'm trying to decrease the deflation in the prick balloon. Because eventually, we're all going to pay a greater price, much greater price.
I agree.
Okay. So I'm trying to minimize the pain, you know? I don't even want to slam my finger in the car door one time.
That would be up to council. Can you would like to amend this agenda item that I put on here? For one million instead of two million, is that what you're saying?
No, I've made my motion.
Repeat your motion, please.
My motion is we leave the original one million in the light and power to in lieu of a, a utility rate increase.
Okay, I understand that.
And to equalize, and to equalize the impact of drawing funds out of that reserve to minimize that and equalize what you were proposing, we take a million to help offset some of the cost of the utility bill to all utility customers.
I believe that's what I said. Mr. The two million, one million. Yeah. One million to light and power and instead of the two million that I've asked to be allocated here, make it one million. So that amendment, motion has been amended.
Mr. Mayor, quick question from the media. Okay, just to make sure, because I'm confused too. We're voting, you guys are voting on a million instead of two million, correct?
That's correct. That was his amendment. He's amended for one million. I had it for two million, but he's taking it down to one million. And he's saying because since council did during the last meeting, Mr. McCroskey allocated, asked for a motion to allocate one million to fund the light and power fund in lieu of increasing the rates. So the rates are not going to be increased, but what I wanted to do was I wanted to add two million at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month. But what Councilman Hildebrand is proposing is to decrease that from two million to one million and make it a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a month. But if council approves that, that's what they want to do.
And that money would come from the SRMPA fund?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my head around that too, a lot.
May I ask what your question on that is?
Everything. Are we negative currently?
No, ma'am, we're not.
So we're balanced on that?
I'm just, what we're doing is this is coming out of the SRMPA fund. This is nothing that coming out, not coming out as.
Covering a utility entity with that money, correct?
Say again?
We're, we're, it's going into utility entity. So you're.
It's going into light and power.
Our utility.
Right, right. Well, it's our, it's our department.
Yes, our light and power department.
Okay, so.
To help put, Mr. McCroskey, the motion that she made was that to help fund the light and power department in lieu of increasing the rates. We're not going to increase the rates. She allocated a million dollars to that. What I did with the, with the item that I put on the agenda was, which I'm pretty sure a lot of people were here last year, but what we did was we took three million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars a month to come off our invoicing from SRMPA.
Right, here all throughout that.
Okay.
I am there.
And what is your question?
Well, my question is like, it's all about checks and balances.
What is your question?
So we're wanting to pull a million dollars only from that one fund?
No, ma'am. It's going to be two million dollars. One million has been allocated to the light and power department to fund the light and power department. I had two million on here, but Mr. Hildebrand, he, he, he amended the item that I had on here for one million. So yes, it will only be two million, so it won't be three million. It would have been three million if they would have approved this, what I put on the agenda. So they're just saying one million and one million.
And here's my reason again. It would have been three million if that. We're not even six months into this reserve. So basically, the way I look at it is it's four or five months in, we can either pull out two million or we pull out three million. The bottom line is this.
Why don't we just leave the money alone? The rates are not bad.
Well, we're trying.
That's your opinion, ma'am, but we've got, I'm just saying, we have other people saying.
I say, I'm not saying they're exactly fair one hundred percent. I'm not saying that. But that is a fair rate. Why can't we just as a community and as a city, leave that money alone? Leave it be and let it grow. Interest grows, so you can have your fund money with the interest extra.
Sir. Can I speak to that?
Yes, sir.
The answer is simply this. We've had other workshops and the people said leave it alone. I mean, I was, I was all for the three-tier increment plan where we didn't touch those reserves.
I can see where it can work in areas, but you can't do it overall because it's only anticipation. Our rates will come on a yearly basis.
That's correct.
That's correct.
We'll be right back here next year.
Yeah, we don't want that. I mean.
Well, we got to be back here next year because of.
Well, I'm not saying don't want to be back here. You, you rate every year, you, you, you vote on it. I get that, but it's all coming down to the budget. If we're borrowing money to cover budgets in that, our utility company?
We're not borrowing money.
It's not, okay, you're, not borrowing, okay, so.
You told my transfer, I allocated money from a fund that we already have.
You're transferring out to cover that expense. Why is our expenses and to prevent, to provide such a utility so great in some areas? I think some areas can be cut. I think owner responsibility throughout our city is huge, one hundred percent.
That's, that's how she, and I agree. I agree. Because what we said and I, I had the same discussion with Mr. Hildebrand.
And that will come from our ordinance being required.
And with our city manager. Because you may, you might, you might. What I, what I do is, I mean, everybody's not going to look at their usage. And that's what it actually boils down to.
Well, you have, you need the common knowledge if you're going to read a utility bill and know how it works.
Everybody's not going to do that. People don't look at it as, like, in the end and say, my, my electric bill is a hun, is this much money.
Well, if you feel you're, you know, you're running too much, let me come inspect your house, ma'am. Sorry, however.
You must invade your privacy and come inspect your house. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Are we still in public?
No, no, ma'am.
Are we in a city council meeting? So this is highly irregular.
No, ma'am. If she wants to speak, she, she is a citizen.
It is highly irregular.
But she had a question.
I'm sorry.
She did have a question. I know it's irregular, but I'm not going to tell her how she can speak.
I was just clarifying if we were still in the public.
No, ma'am, we're not. She had a question about the item that was on the agenda. So she can speak to an item that's on the agenda if I'm not mistaken. Council, am I not mistaken? She is asking to speak with an item that we are addressing on the agenda.
I wasn't trying to, and I'm sorry, no, it's not that. I just, we got off, we got off subject and since.
All right, so right now, I will. And then Councilman Hildebrand amended the motion for a million dollars. So can we get a, we have the motion. The second on his amendment.
We have a second.
We have a second. But can we get a vote? We already had discussion. Are we done with discussion? Are we done with discussion, everybody? Okay. Can we get a vote? All in favor of Mr. Hildebrand's amended motion, say aye? Any opposed? Okay, we amended that from one million to two million, which would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand coming off our invoices from SRMPA from two fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Item number three, consider for approval. Thank you very much, council. Ma'am, thank you very much for your comments. Consider for approval demolition of a structure at twenty seventy-nine rear street damaged by fire. Fire Marshal Duckworth?
Mayor, council, I submitted this approval or to receive the approval to demo the structure that was severely damaged back in February of this year. I've been through the process of tagging the structure, contacting the owners or the representatives, and they have failed to respond. So now I'm asking for approval to go ahead with the demo process and take it down with city equipment and move forward with a lien if they don't have to.
Ready any questions, council? Counsel, what's that?
I did base.
Did name, yes. Right behind the chair, my client, trying to handle the phone call.
I have a question as well. You've done everything that you could to contact the property owner, and they're not responding to you at all about removing this structure before we put a lien against their property?
That's correct.
So have you spoken with them?
Yes, ma'am.
And they can't afford to have it removed? Or they're just telling you that they're not going to have it removed?
They don't make any motion to do anything.
And is this the timeframe that you usually give before you demolition a structure and building?
Generally have thirty days. This started, this process started in February. I tagged the structure after talking to him, getting him out of the time in June. So June twenty-sixth, I tagged the property. That's another thirty days. So now I'm here before council asking to move forward with process.
Now, how long has it been since the, how much time? About thirty days, or what is it, like, about ninety, about three months? You said since February, right?
Yeah, February. May I say something here?
Sure.
I don't know what he was talking about, what he's got to put up. I think the order of property is in the grocery store. Problem.
I was just making sure that every effort had been made before we put a lien against someone's property. Yes, sir.
I know a little bit about it. I've been sure he has, yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
This isn't the first piece of property that he owns that liens have been put against.
And Mr. Barber is aware of that because it is in his district. Can we just talk about that piece of property? I'd like to, I'd like to ask that we table this by week. Give it by week. Because I think this is easy. Yeah, but he's, but I thought his daughter.
There's three representatives that represent the state, Sierra, Son Dan, and another daughter.
Mr. Mayor, propose by week. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Holmes, let me suggest that you ask to postpone it. Because to table it means we still have to make a decision tonight.
Or just postpone it?
Another motion postponed, second?
I'll make a second.
Second by Mr. McCroskey. All in favor? Is there any more discussion? We discussed. Any more discussion? Any further discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor? Postpone? Motion passes with four. We have four. Okay. Item number four. Consider approval of Texas municipal league red sixteen directory election. Correct.
Mayor, council, this is official ballot for the PML region sixteen. Brought to y'all because there is a, three peoples running for this position. One out of Azalea, one out of Hemphill, one out of Cleveland. I'd for y'all to pick somebody. I felt like the person, the mayor of Hemphill, since he's in East Texas.
Would you speak into your mic, please?
Felt like the mayor of Hemphill being on here, it might be something we could vote for. We have representation, somebody from East Texas on the PML red sixteen.
Thank you. Council?
Well, I was going to offer Ms. Birchfield for Azalea. But, but Ms. Kelly makes a great point about being East Texas neighbor. I just know, I know Ms. Birchfield's great reputation. She's one person in two small communities that anytime anybody needs or wants anything, she's the go-to person. And she makes it happen. But like I said, I, I get the, the neighbor gesture. So I'm good either way.
I'm good either way. Thank you.
So we, Councilman Hildebrand has a person that he would like to, still want to consider, and so does, uh, no, I'm just, okay, you're just bringing it up. Okay, so we have the Texas municipal league region sixteen directory election. What's the young, what's the lady's name?
Her name is Cindy Birchfield.
Cindy Birchfield?
Are you ready for a vote?
Yes, I'm ready for, I would.
I'm going to be the big boy here, and I'm going to go with the mayor of Hemphill.
Okay. All in favor?
I'll stand.
Okay, we have a second, I'm sorry. Second by Ms. McCroskey. All in favor? Any further discussion on this? Okay. Motion passes. Consider for approval adoption, item five, consider for approval adoption of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Any motion?
I'll make a motion.
A motion by Ms. McCroskey, second? Second by Councilman Holmes. Any discussion? No further discussion?
Well, I had, I was checking to make sure I had the, the right agenda item. So let me ask this. What's the, what are we, what are we looking for in a legal opinion? And, and just guessing, well, I don't even want to guess.
I think we're voting on the budget.
Voting on the budget, number five.
Number five, the plan.
I have number five.
I'm a speed reader. Sorry about that.
Yes, sir.
Can we get a motion? Can we get a second?
I had a second. No, I made a motion.
DeMarcus. DeMarcus. Okay. Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consider for approval, item number six. Consider for approval ordinance number zero nine zero nine two four A. Setting electrical rates for twenty twenty-four. Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. McCroskey, can we get a second? Second by Councilman Holmes. Any, any further discussion on this matter?
I, I do. I would like to make a point that we're not raising the electric rate at all. This, this vote that we're making, correct, Robbie? Is not to increase the electric rates at all in any way. Okay.
Further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, B, ordinance number zero nine zero nine two four C. Applying allocated adjustments contingency reserves and providing for amended budgets for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget plan. Can we get a motion? A motion by Councilman DeMarcus Holmes, second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember McCroskey. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Sample says no. Motion passes three to one.
You missed one. You missed, uh, B.
I did.
I just did B.
No, well, A.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Setting, oh, okay. Ordinance number nine, zero nine zero nine two four B. Setting and establishing twenty twenty-four fiscal year operating budget. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion on that? Or, I'm sorry, item A?
I'll make a motion.
Amendment by Councilmember McCroskey, second? Second by Councilmember Holmes. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No, for Councilman Sample, we have three to one. Now, I have B. Ordinance numbered zero nine zero nine two four C.
We just.
We just did that? I ain't even, I'm not right drawing them off here. Okay. Consider for approval appointment. appoint a city charter review commission of five or more members Consider for approval, appointment, appoint a city charter review commission of five or more members from the city of Jasper as provided by Article eleven, general provision eleven dash point twelve, charter review commission. I'd like to say one thing on this before we move, before we move on it. The charter does not state for the charter review commission, it says only five. It doesn't say five or more. I do believe the ordinance review commission is five or more, but the charter states five numbers. And also, I would like to let counsel know that during our last council session, if you decide, if you already have your appointees that you wanna put on this charter review commission, what we need to do is... Councilmember, former Councilmember David Schultz had appointed his, nominated his father-in-law, I believe it was, Mr. Rains or Mr. Ryan's, I don't know his name, and he was approved by council. So he is at current, one of the only charter review members that has been approved. So if you decide you wanna move forward with this, you would have to be removed if you decided the five of you would like to replace him with an appointee from your district.
Can I say this a little pain?
Sure.
I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion that we postpone item eight and nine until a few later than...
We have a motion for, from Councilman Hildebrand to postpone those, second by Councilman Demarcus Holmes. No further discussion? All approv, all approve? All four?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Postpone item eight and item nine to be postponed. Item ten, consider for approval, Jasper Police Department adoption of state model policy, medical and psychological examination, interim chief, Point Dexter.
Mayor, counsel, what this is, is this is a policy that we have to put into our policy. It's sent down by the state of Texas, T-CO, which is our governing agency over our, all the parts of the state of Texas. If you can do one or two things, you can, you can create your own policy or you can adopt the state policy. We feel like it'd be, be easier and better posted just to adopt the state policy, no questions asked. We'll go by what they recommend and don't have to worry about it in the future if there's something we didn't put in our...
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion?
I move as presented.
We have, we had a motion from Councilman Holmes, second by?
Hildebrand?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Second by Hildebrand. All in favor? Any, any discussion on this matter, counsel? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. No, no. We have four as a quorum. Next item, consider for approval, MOU for police department.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, my, all these ladies up here fussing that cold freezing death in here. What's the temperature back here?
Get somebody to adjust the thermostat, please.
Thank you, Mike.
Save a buck.
Will there come in from interim chief, Point Dexter, before we move on this item?
This memorandum of understanding is with Newton County. Little backstory, small apartment. We're small apartments, a lot of times we exchange work with different departments, but we can't afford to have undercover officers come in and send undercover officers out. And we do an operation with another city or county, we like to have this memorandum. That way, any seizures or anything that's done, we get our piece of the pile. So we'd like to get this memorandum for this Newton County. The DA over there has already agreed to it. She has signed it, I have signed it, and we will reap some benefits out of this, I can assure you.
I have a question. Does Newton sign one with the city of Jasper as well? Does their police, do, do they sign one with us as well?
The district attorney's office over there signs the memorandum. That way, it gives us jurisdiction throughout the county. Now, our, our officers do not go over there. They can go over there and work with, at the request of the chief of police, the sheriff, the DA's office, but normally we work in conjunction with the state and federal agencies, so we're covered for that. But this, this right here gives us the, we're able to actually reap benefits if there's any type of seizures, money, vehicles, homes, or anything like that that's sold off. And we are able to reap those benefits and, and get that money back to the state or the federal agencies.
Yes, the west county, any other way?
Any city or county we do it with, ma'am?
Yes. Any, any city or county that we would go in and do any type of work, we would get a memorandum done with them. So if there's any seizures, then we get our piece of the pile. This is only Newton's, Newton's county's the one we're working with right now.
When we do any here in our town?
Same thing.
Drug raids.
Same thing. If they come...
Do any in our town here?
I'm sorry?
We do any drug raids in our town.
Yes, sir.
When?
We just did one here not too long ago.
Excuse me, sir.
What else, what else, what else have you done?
Well, I'm not gonna get into any undercover operations for example. That's a safety issue for our officers. This is just so we can reap the benefits of...
I'm just asking your question.
I answered your question.
Excuse me, Councilman Hildebrand?
This is a good deal.
It's all right. I figured it'd make you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve? The MOU?
I move as presented.
Councilman Hildebrand's motion, second by Councilman Holmes. No further discussion? Approval? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Two for, all, all opposed?
Aye.
Two opposed? You give a vote. So we have a tie. I'll break the tie. Did you say no? Did you say no?
I didn't say anything.
Did you say anything? City secretary, what did he say?
I didn't say nothing.
Can I say something else without this memorandum? If we don't approve this, then our officers aren't gonna be able to go and work in other agencies. We're not gonna have agencies come here and work from there. This...
Excuse, excuse.
I'm gonna wait and tell you this. There was nine, ninety-five thousand dollar seize on this last injunction that we done with Newton County, that if we don't approve this, we're not getting a nickel out of it. And that money's allocated to be used for narcotics undercover operations in the city or wherever we need to do it. But that's up to y'all if you don't wanna approve.
Thank you, sir. Let me, let me ask. City secretary, will you read back the answers for the ayes and the noes?
I thought I heard two for and two against.
Okay. So when anybody, oh, we're here now. Or is that still the way it is? Okay. We need to, look, can we take a re-vote? Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item number twelve, consider for approval, resolution three zero one four, resolution for the city council of the city of Jasper, Texas, authorizing the city administrative to enter into a multiple use agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation, Tex, Tex dot, allowing the installation and operation of automated license plate recognition cameras in Tex dot right away. Counsel, interim chief?
What this is, is Detective Sergeant Cody Christopher has been working some cases with a company called Flock. It's a, it's a license plate recognition camera system. We've talked to several different officers in different towns, different areas that have used this, and this actually helps us solve cases. We've also spoke with Mr. Eddie Hopkins. He can also use it for the Jedco stuff, to see how many people come and visit Jasper, go to the different businesses, frequent the business, spend money in our town, motels, Walmart, places like that. Our vehicles already have this license plate reader system on them, and we have, I think you should have a copy of our, uh, policy that we put together, that lieutenant officer put together for, for the council. These license plate readers go on the Tex dot property, and we have to have a resolution with them, okay, that we put those cameras on those, on their property. Now, this camera system's only gonna be for sixty days. It's a trial basis. I've, I've spoke to city manager Kelly about it, Mayor Land has been on some meetings, so has Mr. Hopkins. It's a good system. Now, this does not mean that we're buying this system. It means we're looking at this system for sixty days. It's a trial basis for sixty days. It's free. If it doesn't work for us, if it, if, if we don't reap any benefits out of it, then all we gotta do is send it back and say, no, we don't want it. Whatever agency that I've spoken to, Diboll, Salvestein, Center, Beaumont, Houston, I'm gonna Detective Christopher, Christopher has talked to numerous agencies and officers around the state. They love this system. But this is a trial basis only. If we can't come up with funds for it, if we can't afford it, in sixty days, we send it back to them.
No cost?
I think this will not be installed until maybe December, January?
Yes, sir. After, after we get this resolution and we move forward with Tex dot, make sure everything's combined with them, they won't start our sixty day until all cameras are installed and we are actually operational and have a training in place for the program. And then the sixty day starts.
Detective Christopher used this system to solve a, a major theft on my loans, large money theft. He was able to locate the people in Katy, Texas. I'm not gonna go into the, at some later time, we can go in, if we go with this camera system, how it works. He's a very well-bursted holler this. Each one's been running the show and back and forth a little. It, it would really benefit our city if we can do the trial basis and it'll work and we can afford it. I think it'd definitely be worth it, our business for thousands of land.
Any other questions from counsel? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move as presented.
Councilman Hildebrand, motion to approve this, second? Second by Council, by Councilman Holmes. All in favors? Or any further discussion on this item?
I would like to ask one question. Could we sometime prior to the sixty day termination, get a report from you so that we've got time to say yes or no from our perspective?
Most definitely. I'll, I'll tell the officers once we get this, this installed, that we're gonna use the devil out of it.
I like it. I like it.
I also have a question. We, we just, we just did a budget, right? We just passed the budget. There's no way that this could have been included anyway in, in what we were doing, correct?
We didn't have the particulars on it at the time. I have, we do have an, an, uh, agency that is willing to go, forego half the cost of this. Like I said, at a later date, we could probably sit down and discuss. I don't have the number, what the total system cost, but we do have someone that's willing to pay for half of it. If we can come up with the funds for the rest. We wanted to try the system out to make sure it's gonna work for us.
Right, that's free.
I'm sorry. It's totally free for sixty days.
But after sixty days, you would need to pay for it then, correct?
Yes.
If we don't keep it?
Yes. If we don't keep it, we have, we let them know that, no, we don't, we can't get the funding, rest of the funding, it's not working for us, then they come out, far free, pick up the cameras, and we're done. If we see that it does work, then we have to bring it back to council, and y'all are willing to go forward with this, then this would have to discuss the rest of the funds.
What others?
Uh, shed Kevin. Just Hopkins, he'll have to put it in our budget. Because it will benefit them also. They can actually be able to tell, you know, who's coming to Jasper, spending money on these license plate readers, because they'll tell where they're from, and they will have access to it also.
I have one more question. Have you asked any community members how they feel about this information being collected? I mean, I understand that you use this for criminal purposes, but you're saying you're gonna use this for...
Well, there's very, there's very stringent guidelines on the system. I mean, you can't just go and say, well, I'm gonna go check and see where my wife's going to there, my husband's been. There's, there's very, as, as Detective Christopher can tell you, there's, there's some pretty strict guidelines that you have to abide by.
As far as the Jedco side, it's, it's not running license plates and getting information. It doesn't do that. It would give you volume. How many people are coming through on Sundays or holidays, or how many travel out of town on weekends, what states are coming in and out of the community. It doesn't, doesn't give any personal information. Doesn't run a license plate.
It's just for numbers.
It's for numbers. For the, for us, it would be to work criminal cases. For instance, I think it was Harris County that solved a, a major homicide by using this camera system.
Lieutenant Foster?
Again, the other part on there that has to be in there, we already have them in our cars, but the only time it, it pops up on there is, is a registry in our database. There's a hit, like if it's a stolen car or something else or a, middle word, it pops up on our computer screen. But there is already installed in our cars, an automatic license plate reader. When the guys are riding around, it's in there. So that needs to be approved, to be put in our policy. But it doesn't just read everybody's license plates and say, oh, that's so, so. It's only, uh...
Only if you get a hit on it.
It's only a hit, like if it's stolen.
Amber alerts, silver alerts, and statewide audits.
If that information's not put into the system by some agency, then it's not there.
Yeah.
And like I said, it's only a trial basis for sixty days.
We have the motion by Hildebrand, second? All in favor? Any further discussion? Excuse, we have someone in the back that has a question on this.
Yes, sir. Um, I believe that we've already talked about the operating budget for the fiscal year and everything, financial, electric. Is this gonna be solar powered? I'm familiar with some of them. Are they solar?
There, uh, twelve are solar powered, and two are battery powered that are mobile.
So that'll decrease the amount for them, cost of...
We have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Four, we have four unanimously. Item number thirteen, consider for approval, request, special joint, Jasper, Jasper city council, Jasper Economic Development Corporation meeting to be held at city hall, scheduled by the city secretary for the month of October. This item was submitted by, okay, Councilman Sample. So can we get an approval on this?
He made, he made a, he made a motion.
You making a motion?
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion on this item?
I have, what's, what is the objective or end goal for this meeting?
That would be the, the, uh, requestor. This is a requestor, so you could give us here?
Sure. Um, the city council and Jedco have had many joint meetings together to discuss the community and, and the things that they're bringing to the community. They haven't had one in years and years, so I think this would be great, information-wise, for the community. And also to show unity between, you know, the city of Jasper and, and what we're doing over at Jedco, because I, I believe that it should be a partnership. So I think it would be great to have a meeting, and it used to be a very common, common thing, to have Jedco and the city council have a meeting together.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, that's the goal. And I think it'd be great for the community as well to come and ask any questions that they have about Jedco as well, because there are a lot of questions.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve? So we have, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Four? Four aye, no against. Okay, item fourteen, consider for approval, Premier Anselan Junior from the following Jasper Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors, Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission Executive Committee, and San Regime Civil Authority Agency Board. Can we get a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on this?
I have, I've got a couple of questions. I can't speak for all of the boards, but Southeast Texas Regional, I don't believe that is a city council-appointed position. I think that is a Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, auto, birth. Every county judge, every mayor is automatically put in that seat. So I don't know that, that we would even have the authority, and I'm not so sure San Regime Municipal is the same. I may be wrong.
If I could, if I could speak to your question, Laquen. Um, in the charter, section three point zero seven, powers of the city council, under A, it says the, it says the all powers of the city and the determination of all matters of policy shall be vested in the city council without limitation and foregoing. And among the other powers that may be exercised by this city council, the following are hereby enumerated for greater certainty, and A says, remove from any office or position of employment in the city government, any officer or employee or member of any board or commission. And I, I would also like to say that I believe that the former mayor pro temp, Mr. Rashad Lewis, was on this board with Mr. Demarcus Holmes.
Right, Mr. Holmes?
Yes. And, and, and then, I'm sorry, at the planning commission, and also the mayor was appointed, so if the city council appoints and removes, we appoint and remove. You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, in my opinion, that's what the charter says. Uh, counsel, would you like to...
Can I speak right now?
Sure. I, I thought it was, I'm sorry. I thought I was recognized.
No, I just wanted to let you know this, that the bylaw for Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, along with what Mr. Hildebrand said, and their bylaws state for the executive committee, each member of the city shall have two member, two representatives, the mayor or their alternate, and one council member or their alternate. Council member who shall be appointed by the respective city governing body. The council member is appointed by the governing body and, and their appointee, but the mayor, according to it, I... But the mayor, according to it, I checked with the executive director of the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, to make sure that this was their bylaws, the mayor is an automatic reporter. And I spoke with Ms. Shannon Burton at the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, and that's what I was told.
Legal counsel, does the City Council appoint and remove to all of these boards? And we, we also, the City Council appointed the mayor to this board.
No, the City Council did not appoint me to this board, not to Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission. The other boards, they did, as I just stated, in their bylaws, and I have them right here in front of me. That was stated to me by the executive director of the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, and I ask her to be clear on it.
I would tell you that Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors and the San Houston Municipal Power Agency. Everything except for the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission.
Please use the mic here, we cannot hear. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
The, is to consider the approval or removal of Mayor Land from Jasper Economic Development Corporation, Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission Executive Committee, and the San Raeburn Municipal Power Agency Board. It would be my opinion that the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission Executive Committee has already stated that the mayor shall be part of that. But the other two, which would be the Economic Development Corporation Board Director, San Houston Municipal Power Agency Board of Directors, would be strictly up to whether or not the mayor is approved or removed. That's my opinion.
Thank you, council. Okay, so we had a motion by Councilman Sample, second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman McCroskey. Any further discussion? I have one question. Why?
So do I.
I have one question, why?
We all have that question.
Since Mr. McCroskey, you and Councilman Sample did submit this for approval, I would just like to know why.
Please call the question.
No. Why?
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 Public wants to know why.
Why?
Why? Why? Why?
Point of order, mayor. Point of order.
The public wants to know, the public wants to...
You can't deny a point of order.
No, you can't. This is fair.
I know I'm not a dictator, sir. Would you please?
She made a point of order.
Well, thank you, thank you. Please be recognized, sir. I would do that when you, if you were mayor, I would do that, and I should recognize you, so you're a point of order. What is your question of your point of order?
Point of order is, this is a closed City Council meeting, and, and...
This is it.
Okay, I asked, I asked earlier, was this an open meeting or closed meeting?
No, you were talking about, what you asked earlier was about, we were still talking about the electric rate. We, we, we went out of that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We went out of electric.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, this is not a closed meeting. This is an open meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yes, ma'am, okay. Yeah, we went out of the public hearings, and we went into the regular City Council.
Okay. So can we know why?
So your question, question on your, uh, point of order. The question is why? You asked for a point of order, and I said question.
Question?
We're waiting.
Yeah, we're waiting, mayor.
You represent our people, you say.
Question?
You have to hold your own cattle.
First, you have to watch.
Question? There's none of the questions asked, there's...
I'll... About that, it's why?
I can understand.
Well, he don't, he don't, he don't talk to us. He don't let us know what's going on.
Speak into your mic. You might carry it.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can? A little louder. That's good for you.
Please, please, council, councilman?
Uh, he didn't, he's not producing to us, he's not letting us know what's going on, and he's, uh, sort of done got it in his head that he's the big guy around here. He is not the big guy around here. He is, he is not the leader. The City Council tells him one thing.
Uh, I do not believe that's correct, sir, but you can continue.
You go ahead, sir.
Because we are all City Council.
Who votes? Who votes? Who votes? Who votes up here, not you? Who votes up here? Vote behalf. Go ahead. Go ahead. Now we found out who, who's, we found out one time.
I called the question.
I called, I called the question.
Call the question. Councilman Hildebrand.
I called the question. That many, but...
Yes.
I, I call for additional discussion.
Counsel?
We've discussed everything.
Counsel, if you'd like some additional discussion, we have a member of the...
They all have a question, why?
Okay.
No, my, my, that's not my question.
Pick up, Bob.
I'll speak up.
No, not my question. I, I think we have, we, I think why, what would I be answering? If not the mayor, then who? If not the mayor, then who?
Uh, we're going to do that at a later date, sir.
What?
No.
Mr. Sample, please.
That makes sense.
We take a vote? We have a motion and a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
We have two ayes and two, wait a minute. Okay, we have two ayes, four, we have two four and two against, okay? Mayor, I have to break the tie. I vote not to remove. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir.
Excuse me.
Sir. Councilman Sample, please. Councilman Sample, Councilman Sample.
No, done wrong, sir.
Councilman Sample.
I didn't know who voted for and who voted against.
Okay.
I don't have that.
Okay, let's, let's vote again. The, the city secretary did not hear that. Who voted for to have me removed?
Joe.
Joe Hand.
Councilman McCroskey and Councilman Sample. Who voted to keep me off? Councilman DeMarcus Holmes and Councilman Hildebrand. We have a tie. I broke the tie, I will break the tie and vote to keep me off. Next item on the agenda. Consider for approval review and discuss bylaws for Jasper Economic Development Corporation Type A Board. The members who asked for that to be done.
I make a motion to postpone.
Councilmember McCroskey makes a motion to postpone.
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Hildebrand. Vote, please. Is there any, any discussion on this? Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item sixteen, consider for approval, legal opinion by an outside attorney regarding Proposition A, number five dash ten dash twenty-two. The City of Jasper shall not charge more than ten percent above cost of any utility it provides to its customers. Can we get a, a motion to approve?
I'd like a motion.
A motion by Councilman Sample, a second by Councilman DeMarcus Holmes. Any discussion?
Yes, one question.
Yes, sir.
This, this is my question from eight items ago, okay?
Huh?
So, what, what are we looking for, or could someone define for me what the legal opinion would be asking for?
Mr. Sample?
Uh, well, it's reported in by the people.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's there.
It's there.
And it's never been nothing done with it.
Okay, so let me, let me just, for the sake of the whole council, let me ask this. Would a legal opinion serve us better justice, or would making this question a part of the forensic audit that we've approved, would it be better served there?
Yes.
Because you're talking about a lot of work to figure out, how, where, what, whether it's been, or...
I just want to find out the truth.
So I, I think an investigation...
Yes.
I just want to find out the truth.
I feel like the, the question, now, okay, I feel like the question has been out there, that it has never been implemented for all utilities. I do feel as though it has been for the electric rate, because that basically is what's in the Charter. But the question has not been answered to me, to my satisfaction, and I will say this, with everybody here, as to the water and sewer. That, the question has been put and has been, has been discussed and talked about in public comments, that, that portion has not been. So redo it. Go ahead.
Okay, so... We know it's been passed. It was overwhelmingly approved by the board, so it's there, it's an ordinance.
Yes, correct, it is, because it is on the, because it is on the, uh...
The question as to why not, or why, or if it has not, why not? For the last several months, I've actually been doing my own research, my own investigation. And I can tell you that after, I, I can't say it was the day after, the week after, but shortly after, the measure passed by the voters.
Yes, correct.
Here's where I hit the, the herd.
The wall, the brick wall.
The brick wall. And, and no matter what angle, what direction I took, I hit the same brick wall. Apparently, there was a, a question from the then-city administrator to an attorney. And it's like when people say, well, they're saying, well, who is they? I can't find out who that attorney is, but it's alleged that that attorney told this person, don't worry about it, don't do anything.
That was, that's the allegation. That's the question that was asked of, of the previous city manager. I'll put it that way, like this, that's the question that was asked to the previous city manager. And in this council setting, it was said, I don't know.
And then, how, how do, how, I can't imagine the, the time and the energy and the effort it's going to take to formulate the cost of producing all of those utilities, not just electric, but all three, electric, water, sewer, to every customer.
I, I have one question that I would like to ask our city finance director, current city manager. You weren't in that position at the time, you weren't a director, you weren't a city finance director, you weren't a city manager, but is there any way that you could find out if the water and sewer was not, if, if the rates of the water sewer, water and sewer did not go over ten percent of our, of our...
That's why the council approved for us to do the rate study.
So we have a water and sewer rate study? So is that rate study going to tell us if that actually took place?
It should tell you what you are right now, that's all I can deal with for the right now.
Okay.
The forensic audit is one that's going to tell what happened in the past.
And that's already been approved, correct?
It's already been approved.
So when that's done, then we should have an answer. Okay. So, how do you want to proceed with this, with the opinion? Would you like to proceed with acquiring outside counsel on this issue? Or would you like to go with the, I'm just asking a question, would you like to go with the forensic audit?
We already have a forensic audit approved, that's fine, thanks, whatever.
There you go. That's what.
Okay. So, we have this agenda, aye? Consider for approval, legal opinion, so, all in favor of continuing with the outside attorney? Yay? Say aye? All opposed?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion doesn't pass. Consider for approval, JEDCO twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year operating budget. Anyone need to speak on it? Can we get a motion to approve?
I move as presented.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye? Any discussion?
I have some discussion.
Okay, discussion, discussion.
We're approving their budget?
We have, this, Councilman, Councilmember McCroskey said she has some discussions.
I have some questions about the budget. Usually, Mr. Hopkins is here to answer questions, is he here?
Yes, he's here.
Mr. Hopkins, are there any specifics to this budget, other than this one page? There's nothing that you usually give the City Council, any more details about the budget for JEDCO?
This is all the chairman presenting.
And can you tell me the sales tax right now? How are, how is the sales tax? That's what, what you do your budget by, correct?
That is correct. We've surpassed this year's budgeted, uh, expense, I mean, revenue sources. We still don't have September's payments yet, but what we did to formulate the budget, we used our worst month of collections to come up with this budget. And even by doing that, we still surpassed what we budgeted for revenue.
And so you've seen that the sales taxes, you've surpassed it already with sales tax? It's for inside the City of Jasper, right?
It is. It's been a half a penny is what we collect. And we budgeted for the year a million two, and we are currently, we're using the worst month of collections, we're at a million two forty-three.
And Ms. Pink, is that what you reported to us about the sales tax when we did the budget the other day?
When I reported to you his actual numbers from the budget, he's saying that they budgeted a certain amount, they under budgeted, is what he's saying on his revenue. What I gave you was the actual numbers, and we showed that we're down as a city four point seven eight percent.
Always under budget on revenue. It's like trying to make a loan to somebody based on that on overtime. You got to put it on what they actually make, and that's what I always do. We've always done that, in my seven years, anyway. And we also, after that, I'd, I'd just like to add this, we have a five percent reduction in our budget with expenses this year. Seeing what the city was doing, I felt it necessary. And again, Ms. McCroskey, I appreciate us wanting to get together, because I think we do need to meet together. The only time we've met in my seven years together was when we formed Jasper United. And what the councils did prior to that, and when they were a five-member board, a lot of those people were councils and mayors, so they probably did meet together more often. But in my seven years, we've only done it once. And I look forward to having a conversation and talking about what's in the plans, what projects we're working on. Some of those are not make-up, because we can't until we're told we can by the person that's looking at us, so we have to have a challenge in that regard. But I, I would like to say this, we've got a five percent reduction that we're proposing this year, and it's the first time in my seven years that we've actually balanced the budget. Prior to this, because of direct business incentives, you always put a number out there in case you need it to attract a business or something. This year, we budgeted seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for direct business incentives, but we only expended a hundred eighty-six thousand. So we're actually adding back to the fund balance, six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. We've had a, we've had a good year as far as expenses and revenue go, and we're anticipating that happening again because of the five percent reduction and the fact that we did pull back on expenses.
Mr. Hopkins, not disclosing or breaking any trust of any of the entities that you're working with? Could you say approximately, or could you actually say if there is anything currently now in the way of JEDCO bringing more businesses into Jasper?
Absolutely, that's what we do all day, every day. We're always out there, we get, uh, leads from the governor's office that we pursue. Some of those are, are a little outside the realm of what we can do. A lot of them are dictated by a close interstate or an airport, a port. We are blessed that we're on ninety-six, and, uh, the fact that the I fourteen quarter won't happen in our lifetime. But the fact that it's on, even the fact that it's on the drawing board, does give us a heads up with the governor's office. Because we're already called ports to ports. I'm not sure the new name, Fort Oak and Ford Hood are connected with Highway one nine. And then ninety-six in Jasper County and sixty-nine in Tyler County all go to the ports. So we are on the radar for the governor's office on those kind of projects, and we do pursue them. Even though we may not win, we still throw, uh, our offer out there, and it's not really an offer, we throw what we can provide based on the criteria that's in the governor's, uh, project. Look.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask this, uh, you said that there are some things in the works.
Yes, sir.
And I do know that, and I can't disclose that, it's on the board. Employment, full-time employees, staffing, can you, like, give us some numbers as to what those may net us? Those, those, uh, individual businesses that we're bringing in, can you not, without disclosing who they are or what they are, can you, I know you have these numbers, can you tell us as far as what we're looking at as far as employment, startup, uh, construction?
Probably two hundred new jobs are what's on the drawing board right now that could happen in Jasper in the next year.
Uh, what about construction, as far as these places coming in and wanting to, uh, they may have to renovate or change anything, are there any construction jobs involved in that?
Yes, sir, Gator Riddles is already working out at the LP plant, and that construction's happening as we speak. And it's probably going to be about a four million dollar, uh, infusion of, uh, new improvements to that property.
Is all that money coming from, well, can you answer this first? Is all that money coming, well, you can answer this, is it all of it coming from JECO, is it coming from another entity?
No, sir, a million dollars of it's coming from the people that own the property, and then the other money is coming from Gator Riddles themselves. JECO did have an incentive package that they gave them, but it was for infrastructure. Because of what the city's requiring through permitting, uh, there was, uh, fire protection that needed to be upgraded, we agreed to help them with that, uh, there's electrical needs, uh, that we also agreed to help with. And then, uh, fiber to the building, because the plant's going to be run basically, uh, with computers. Cranes and everything out there is going to be computerized, and so they needed high-speed internet, and that's being an infrastructure, we were able to, uh, help them with the two entities that are probably going to be the ones providing internet to that location.
Thank you, any other questions in council?
How many of these, you're talking about employees, how many in Jasper, Jasper County, and not considered out? Coming in here, how many of these are?
You mean, how many live here?
Live here.
I, I don't know that.
Isn't that what it's supposed to be?
No, sir. Now, I don't know which project you're referring to.
About us.
Okay, uh, those, those employees come from all over. I mean, they've got two hundred and twenty employees today, and they won't add another hundred if they can find the space to do it.
How many in Jasper, in Jasper County?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, I can get them for you, we do have zip codes, and I'll get them for you.
Because I'm understanding that they had employees, people here.
No, sir, that never was in the agreement.
I'll get it for you, I can get that for you.
Yes, sir.
I know your ladies are getting, excuse me, I'm sorry, I know your ladies are getting cold, but we'll be adjourned soon, because we have one more item. But just let me say this, uh, only thing that from my, my perspective, when businesses come to Jasper, we can only offer the jobs. We can't make people work, a lot of people don't want to work, they want to stay at home. I mean, I hate to say it, but you know, some people want to stay at home, because it's easy for them to stay at home and collect from the government. There are some people that do that, then to, I'm not going to go to work. I mean, I'll put my business in the screen, I'm retired, I don't get paid for here. I work, I live off social security, so, I'm like some of you out there, I don't have enough, I mean, I'm a relative, I don't, I don't make a lot of money. So, I applaud what council is doing and what we're trying to do with our race and everything, but just like most of you, you may think because I'm, I'm a city, I'm a mayor and all that, we don't get paid for doing this, there is no income with this. We're doing this for you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say this to the council too. I enjoy being the marketing arm for the city. Everywhere I go, it's not just JECO, it's Jasper, and I enjoy being the ambassador for Jasper. And, uh, I, I counter privilege to do that, and, uh, I just want you to know that. Even though we've had some humpy roads lately, I still enjoy representing Jasper where I go. And I'm, I'm blessed to get to go other places and serve on some different boards, but everyone that I serve with knows I'm from Jasper, and I appreciate y'all giving me that privilege.
And I want to say one thing, when we, when the valley came here, when the valley came here, we had a meeting up at that annex, and there was a lot of people from, I mean, that, you had to stand outside to get inside, because that's how much the people of Jasper, and most of those people were from the city of Jasper, was at that annex and welcomed. That was one of the reasons they decided to pick Jasper and not Crockett, because that's where they could have been. They decided to pick Jasper, but the cause of the, of Jasper that welcomed them here, and they went up to that annex, and they signed up and did what they had to do, and they were, it, it, it was, I was there, and I saw it, I, I had to push my way through the crowd, because it was that many people there, and I did know a lot of the people that was there. Now, were they all there looking for jobs, wondering if they could get jobs with JECO? Just like, uh, Stavkin said, you'd have to, and I don't know if they would disclose that to you, you'd have to get in their records, and they'd have to tell you. This person lives in Jasper, this person lives in Kentville, this person is from St. Augustine, they'd have to go through their personnel records. Don't know if they would, we're willing to disclose that.
If I could address that, I think along lines of what Mr. Sample was talking about. We did require that in order to reimburse them for those employees, we had to know.
We had to have so many.
We did, we've got a list of their zip codes, where they're from, but we also use that data. And if I could, let me speak, and I know we've been here a little while, but I need to speak to what the police department's trying to do. In years past, Techs dot has put a piece of rubber across the road, and that's how we counted cars. We've kind of gotten a little more sophisticated, and we can do cell phone data. Unfortunately, Big Brother can tell you how it is at Walmart right now by cell phone phones, you know? And so we use that data to accumulate numbers as to where retail is going. This new technique and tool that the police department's got will do that for us. We don't want to know who they are, we just want to know where they're coming from and, and the fact that they're coming to Jasper to shop. It's pretty evident by our sales tax collections that we are shopping hub. When I, when a half a penny generates what it does, uh, that tells you that people are shopping here and they're spending money here. And so, that's the only reason we would be willing to assist the police department, which, we would assist the police department if the phone rang, we would run to their aid. But, uh, be able to use that data as a tool for us to know what kind of traffic we've got coming to town, instead of the rubber strip across the highway, our cell phone data. This will be more scientific if we can use it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
They got to look up.
They ignore me on that. We didn't vote on that.
Did we have a motion in a second?
We have a motion in a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion passes unanimously. Council, Mr. Mayor, I would like to speak.
I'd like to say one thing real fast.
Well, you know what, let's just go into council time, this, uh.
I thought that's what you asked for. Oh, I'm sorry. Brother Bob, please.
Thank you, I'd like to, uh, address something that, uh, Councilman Sample said, I appreciate your desire to protect Jasper and Jasper jobs. We've added two hundred apartments in the last eight years or so in Jasper. If we bring people in to work, they got to have a place to live. And we can't fit them here, so if they live in Kirbyville and they come here and draw the paycheck, I don't have a problem, that's still Jasper County.
That's Jasper County.
And it still helps me, because they go to Lowe's, they go to Walmart. And if they live in Newton County, they still go to Lowe's and they go to Walmart. So I don't have a problem with that, just understand that we need housing, so if somebody's got a lot of money, please build about two thousand units right quick. People want to be here.
Thank you, Councilman Hildebrand.
What I've got to say is this, with the exception of one little bump in the road tonight, I'm proud to be sitting here with these men and women. I'm equally proud, if not real proud, to be working for all of you and everyone in our favor. Y'all make me a happy boy tonight.
Any other comments from council? Your turn.